And then they more than half was. Then they said, well, it's.
Brought the kids over.
So they got out of our hands and.
Yeah.
And then he was.
Hey.
Yep. We don't have to throw it at the.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. Look at that.
I don't.
At least you know that's pretty much.
Hello.
Um.
Why should we do anything? I just. I can't. But I can make a motion.
Um, I, I see.
I just. I'm just impressed. I've seen. Seen a lot of places in town.
I mean. I mean. I think I already said this. But I think. I think. It doesn't matter.
No, I mean, she's probably. He's probably been to many people.
Oh.
Or.
Oh.
And then this, I would prefer to prepare, but this is. I don't think I'll get that in. Exactly. That's exactly how it is. Around all this stuff.
And I was gonna say, the drawings. I mean, I was. First. Thanks. What's your name? She's been down. The water he draws, I saw him, he sends it to the front area.
Yeah, so this is two things, same property, two deals. There was the.
Right.
Chain of fence for the first one, four feet. You know, that's a whole.
He worked.
The bird, like, it's got a step on it.
Is it a fence? He might just have some. They were supposed to be any harder.
Yeah.
See, the bird aren't like. It's more to the future.
Yes. Turns out.
Well, the question is, is it. Do you grow the water and grow the things?
Everything's.
Right. I know.
Yeah.
I'm just. It's. What do you do to keep your dog in there?
Yeah, I.
Okay, you don't want that to happen.
I, I'm not a hundred, like, I have those over there. If it does say that it has. That's all. It's just.
Hard looking. I love to smell myself dead. Dead. In that. Hard look.
Is that what?
Okay, what's that?
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry. No, I'm preparing rights, don't get preparing rights on Detroit River. I, Detroit, no, nobody had Detroit River. I had only a seat.
Ready?
Preparing rights. Bodies of water, which is ocean, not rivers.
Good afternoon, the Gibraltar zoning board appeals meeting is now called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks, son. Secretary, please read the roll.
Harris, Markham.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Defend. Eager.
Here.
So we need a motion to, uh, def- uh, excuse Mr. Defend.
And Mr. Harris.
Motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we need a motion to approve, uh, the agenda for tonight.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Who?
I.
Who was the second?
I did.
Who was the second?
I'll.
I'll support it.
Doesn't matter.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we need approval of the, uh, previous ZBA minutes from July twenty ninth.
I'll make that motion for the minutes of July twenty nine.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any new business? Um.
Nope.
Nothing? So we'll go back to, uh, July twenty ninth and we, uh, had a variance for three oh seven, four zero. Mr. Malston. And, uh, just to let everybody know, we only have four members today. So we need four yes votes to approve any variances. And if you feel like you need to reschedule, that's fine.
Yeah. No, I think it's okay.
Okay. So if you wouldn't mind, state your name and address and what you'd like to do.
Stephen Melmiston, three oh seven, four oh, Bayview Drive, Gibraltar, Michigan. And I'm applying for a variance to extend the limit of a privacy fence from the, um, leading edge of the main residence up to the leading edge of the garage, which is in front of the residence. And, you know, my reasons for wanting the variance is, uh, uh, privacy issues. Um, you know, from the front door of my house to the end of my garage, it's, it's a thirty six foot distance. It's fully exposed to the street, to neighbors, to whatever. And, uh, in working in my car, I want to be able to work in my trailer on my car with my door open and have the security of a privacy fence up to the leading edge there. Um, I think last month, I don't know if you remember, we spoke somewhat of my things. Would you like me to go over that again?
Well, if you wouldn't, um, you, you gave us three proposals.
I gave you three proposals, right? One was for if there was not a fence allowed going parallel in the berm. Um, but obviously you guys are gonna allow that. I still don't know if it's quite right or not. I was told in two thousand two by Charles Rains, who was the city engineer at the time, that you can't put a fence in a berm like that. You can't put a fence parallel in a berm. You can take a fence and you can go over the top of a berm, but my berm is the lot line and this fence is parallel in the berm. So, uh.
Well, the, uh.
But that's not part of the variance. But so one of those proposals was to go from the water edge, leading edge of my house up to the front edge of the garage. But since it's okay to put a fence in a berm, I just want to do the twenty four feet from the water line up to the, um, front leading edge of my garage.
So you're gonna go with a twenty four foot decorative fence to your.
Of.
Your house and then a privacy fence from your house to the front of the garage.
Proposal one, right?
Proposal one, correct.
Because on proposal. One, we needed a thirty six foot variance.
Yes.
And proposal two, we needed a twenty four foot variance.
Yes.
And proposal three, we need a thirty six foot.
Proposal two is kind of a compromise, which got me halfway there to where at least I could come out the front door of my house and be, ha- have some privacy, be screened. Um, I'd rather really go to the front of my garage. Uh, you know, comparable with the modern houses that are being built nowadays, you know, my house was built in the fifties. The garage is not attached. If my garage were attached, the front of my garage would be the leading edge of the residence. Of the house that's being built next to me now, their garage, um, protrudes another seven feet beyond mine. Um, but it's gonna be considered the leading edge of the house. Now, the house on the side I want to put the fence is set way back in the yard. But at some point in time, somebody's gonna buy that home and rebuild and it's gonna be the same thing. They're gonna put a garage and it's gonna be out to the front leading edge as well. Now, you know, my garage is forty five feet from the road, so it's not like it's close. And, um, a six foot privacy fence at that point would not block anybody's view of any kind of getting in and out of your driveway or driving down the street. The only thing it's gonna do is give me privacy so I can enjoy my prop- I want to be able to enjoy, you know, being out in my yard and doing things. I, you know, I have issues with my neighbors and I want to have, I'd like to have my privacy.
So, um, just so we're all on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, there's a cyclone fence that goes over the berm. Or is it at the top of the berm?
Fence is parallel in the berm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Still, yeah, I guess. Cause it goes along to his house.
But it follows the property line.
Yeah.
And goes over the berm.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. That's coming down once you put up your decorative fence.
Well, that coming down shouldn't have anything to do.
No, but I'm trying to get, uh, we want to cover our bases. So you're thinking of putting a fence along that line, going over the berm into the water?
I'm thinking of putting a fence, no, I'm thinking of putting a fence twenty four feet from the seawall. From that point, seawall's here, twenty four feet, you know, my house being here, from that twenty four. Up to the front leading edge of my garage. The twenty four feet from the, the privacy fence to the water is, is not my responsibility. I, I don't need a privacy fence there. Now, McKenna and Associates said they were gonna do it. If McKenna and Associates wants to come in and do it.
But if I recall, last, last meeting, you said you'd pay for it.
You know, this whole fence is gonna cost me ten thousand dollars.
Dana, but you said last meeting that you, you had no problem paying for the fence to resolve these issues between you guys, to resolve the neighbors.
He's got money. Why should?
Keep your comments in the front.
I'm just, you know, I mean, it's not my respons- my variance, and it says in the application, is for from twenty four feet to the leading edge of my garage. That's, any kind of privacy fence or anything doesn't have anything to do with us. It's a complete, separate issue, which somebody is trying to combine together to make a deal. And it's, I, this is not a deal I should have to make with you guys that I'm gonna pay, that I, regardless of what I might have said, being pressured and going, yeah, I guess, you know, whatever. But, uh, that was in regards to that fence being non-conforming. And me having to pay two hundred dollars to come in here before the board. And with all the paperwork from the city, from McKenna and Associates, everybody saying it's a non-conforming fence. I, I had to pay the money and come before you guys and fight that issue, something I should have never had to fight. And then, so then in that meeting, I mentioned McKenna and Associates said that they were gonna pay for that twenty four feet of fence. And when you guys, somebody might have said, well, if they're not gonna do it, are you, and I was like, well, yeah, I guess so. But it's really shouldn't be my responsibility to put in twenty four feet of decorative fence because my neighbors put in a fence that was a non-conforming. And I've been fighting this for a year and a half. So now at the end of the year and a half, it's gonna cost me ten grand for a privacy fence, plus another thirty five, four thousand dollars to put in a fence to satisfy my neighbor, which broke the law and ordinances in the first place.
Understand that, I just, you, you stated in the last.
My understanding is that that fence was coming down and you were gonna put a fence up.
Correct.
Decorative fence.
I, you know, can do that, but I'm not gonna do anything unless I get my variance, you know?
You're asking, you're not asking for that fence.
That fence has nothing to do with.
Gone and this is gonna be open here to, from the end of your fence to the water, it will have no fence at all.
It never did have a fence until they put an illegal one up.
Okay, that, I'm just asking that. So, so now you're just talking about a six foot fence where the per- pink line is and then a tw- uh, uh, a four foot fence for the out front.
On the yellow mark?
On the yellow mark. Yeah. I just, so the, the issue to me about the, I don't really see many berms shaped like your berm.
No, there's none, that's probably the only one.
So that would, that's a non-conforming berm to begin with. You gotta, somebody somehow let it go.
I don't know how they did it, you know?
Okay, so, so to say that you can't have a, uh, a, a, a fence running parallel to the berm doesn't make sense in this case.
Well, that's, that's fine, that's just what I was told, cause that first sheet, you'll see the date on it, was the proposal I put in in two thousand two for a fence. And I, they, they locate everything except the fence. And that was what I was told at the time. So I'm not coming in here and making stuff up, I'm telling you guys what I was told by the city administrator, city engineer, um, back in two thousand two.
All right, so. To me, if this pipe is, if this fence, if this, if this fence is gone here, then it kind of conforms to what we're trying to get at. And then the six foot fence, people have them.
Well, he- here's the issue, the neighbor, we, we talked about a dog, right?
There are no dogs.
And he explained that the fence was initially built without a permit, partially using substandard materials. And the cyclone fence, portion of the fence was placed on the berm all the way to the seawall, he claims is a violation of the zoning ordinance. That's what you said. And we agreed with you.
Correct. Correct.
And so it was our understanding that the fence was coming down because of what I just read.
Correct. Correct.
And you don't have any problem with that?
No.
Do you have any problem with that?
No, hold on. So we agree that it's coming down or we don't?
Yeah, no, it should, should be coming down, I agree with you. I doubt that he will, but I agree with you, cause that's what the whole thing was about.
Conforming, correct. We, and that's when we, I made the motion to remove the non-conforming fence.
Right.
And we were all in the same understanding of.
Right, right.
Gonna be a decorative fence installed, which you said, and again, that's debatable, I guess, but.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but let's, you know, I mean.
Kind of just seems like you're kind of going backwards on your word there.
Think about it for a second. I've been fighting this for a year, now all of a sudden, I'm gonna be responsible for replacing a fence because he put in a non-conforming fence? I'm not, I'm telling you, I'm not gonna, there will be no fence. I'll, I don't care if I get in my car and drive away right now with no fence, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I, I'm trying to do this to resolve an issue I got with neighbors. This man has broken a windshield wiper off the back of my car. No, let's go, he's moved my mailbox. They approached people in my driveway. He's made false accusations about my gutters. He's gone in front of the city council right here in this room and made false accusations. I got my phone in my car, I got videos of his gutters, that he accused me of flooding his house, overflowed and terribly bad flood in the corner of his own house. They've sent emails to my daughter, they stole a bell on Thanksgiving Eve, they stole the bell out of my yard.
We went through this the last time.
Not all of it.
Well, we want to get to what, what we're talking about today.
You, you, you know.
Please address your comments to the board, not your neighbor.
I'm addressing them to you.
And let's move forward.
Okay. I'm just saying that all this stuff here is just mud and water. The only thing I'm here for is a variance on my fence.
Totally disagree because you specifically said that fence was, we granted you the, what you wanted, but that fence was coming down.
And McKenna and Associates said that they were gonna pay for the twenty four feet of fence.
Well, I don't remember here.
Admitted to it right here.
Anyway, so the way we're looking at this today is. On.
Either proposal.
One.
Two or three.
We've got three proposals.
Mm-hmm.
One requires a twenty four foot.
And, and let me tell you another thing here, to get this on record. The only reason I put in an application for a privacy fence in my yard is, uh, because of Carson told me that's what I should do. Everything I've done in here is because Carson's told me this is what I should do. Carson and McKenna and Associates are the one who set this whole thing up in their failure to look at the ordinances and enforce them. So in him trying to get these people next door to let McKenna come in and replace the non-conforming fence with a decorative, it was a fantastic deal. When they asked me, I said, absolutely, that's all I want. And he went to them and they wouldn't do it. And so he said, okay, Steve, this is what you gotta do. And so that's what I've been doing. And so part of this fence here that I put in was to give me privacy, but also to give McKenna and Associates something to attach their twenty four feet of fence to. And I'm doing this out of the kindness of my heart. I don't need a fence. I don't need it. I'm doing this because the city of Gibraltar's put me in this situation.
I don't understand that part.
Okay, I quit.
Yeah, I, 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 I can't agree with you on that, but.
I don't care if you agree with me or not.
All right. Thank you.
I, I'll just, should I just go?
No, well, if you're gonna get angry.
Calm down.
Well, no, okay. We're here to, we're here to try to get through a situation. We're not the.
We're under, I'm sorry.
We're, we're trying to get through this and you getting angry at us doesn't help anything. Uh, we're not McKenna.
I understand you're not McKenna. I understand you're not.
Asked at the last meeting. We agreed with you. And then you came in today and now it's not what we agreed to.
Well, because.
That's okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I just, you know, the twenty four feet of decorative fence from the seawall to the privacy fence should not be my responsibility to do.
No one says it is. No one says it is. No one says that's your responsibility.
That's good, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I need to, you know, I, you've heard, no, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you.
All right.
At this time, um, anybody in the audience like to speak? Please step up, state your name and address, and please direct all your comments to the board.
My name's Dennis McNeely, I'm at three zero, seven five zero, Bayview Drive in Gibraltar. I just want to address a couple of misconceptions. We originally installed a fence ten years ago, maybe more, um, because of dogs. And specifically, there were Steve's buddy's dog that got loose. And Sandy can't walk around the island, she can't be in the front yard, she, when she walks out the house, she's looking both ways for dogs and she'll come back in house again if she sees one, just go into the car. She would like to be able to enjoy our backyard. So we put a fence up. Steve was bothered and he swore up and down, we won't have any more of that dog getting loose. I took the fence down. And then we had more of the dog and other dogs. And the police department indicated they no longer have the resources to enforce the ordinance regards loose dogs. So we put fence back up. And I figured as long as I was putting the fence back up in the same post holes, we were good to go. City said no, so you gotta get a permit. We got a permit, we got a approval. There was no, there were no substandard materials, there were no hoodwink, there was no effort to sidestep anything. The effort was to create a yard where my wife can go out and enjoy herself without worrying about a dog coming up to her.
How long ago was this?
The fence has been up for maybe two years or so.
So I know that the ordinance said you couldn't do that without a decorative fence, that's a chain link fence, right?
It is.
Okay, so right off the bat, it's two years ago, I know that that wasn't excepting. So I don't know.
Again.
Who gave you a permit?
The, the, the city did. And, and as Steve said, to some extent, yeah, the city's got an oar in the water here too. Um, whether it's McKenna or somebody else, I don't know. Uh, it doesn't matter. But, but the fact of the matter is, as you indicated, we're where we are. And we need to have a yard where Sandy can go out and enjoy herself. And there's this thing, you know, the Americans with Disabilities Act. And if she can't enjoy her yard because there's no fence there, I'm not taking a fence down. And we can go to court, we can do whatever you want to do. But I got a pretty strong hunch that that act is going to speak directly to whether or not we can have a fence there that prohibits dogs. And if McKenna is still willing to pay for the decorative fence, then they can pay Steve. We just don't want to be in a position where Steve's doing this, McKenna's doing that, we wind up with this and we got way too many oars in the wa- in the water. So if McKenna wants to pay Steve to put up the decorative fence, cool, you know, I, no problems. I just want a fence up there so that Sandy can enjoy the yard and without worrying about a dog, cause she will, she'll faint, I, it's happened. Um, so that's essentially brings you to current, I guess. Um, and that was why I made the remark last year, or last year, last meeting. And I asked that we not be required to take down the fence until the new fence was up. And that was, you know, what the discussion was then. So those are kind of, um, I just want everybody to know here, we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We put up the first fence, the ordinance allowed it. We got a permit, it was approved, I took it down, the first.
How long was the first fence?
You weren't here last week, he did.
The first.
I gotta ask a question.
The first fence was probably ten years ago, maybe fifteen, I, it was a long time ago.
I've been on it for thirteen years.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was, it was, uh, a thing, we hired a contractor, he came out and he put it in.
Fifteen years.
Um, so in any event, um, and, and the second time was because we took the first one down, cause Steve asked us to. We're not trying to be finks as neighbors, we are trying to make this work. But I gotta consider, my wife needs to be able to enjoy her yard. And that doesn't seem like a whole lot to ask. That's, any, any questions, comments, criticisms?
So he doesn't have a dog?
No, it's just, and, and I'm not trying to blame Steve for a hundred percent of this, his buddy's dog is what started it. But there have been other dogs wandering around. The day we were putting up this fence, two years or whatever ago, that day, there was a big black dog in Steve's yard. Now, he has no control over that, I know that. And we called the police and they, that was when they said, we don't have the resources to enforce the ordinance. Well, that doesn't get it, you know? Uh, we're, we're all trying to come up with, so, I think we're all trying to come up with a solution that works for Steve, works for us. And, you know, we can move forward. But it's got to include something where Sandy can enjoy the yard. That's, that's all, so.
All right, thank you.
Anyway, any other questions, comments?
We're good, I think.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Get one, just one second. So what we have here is we've got a decision that was made at last meeting to take the fence down.
I think that's appropriate, appropriate.
So we all agreed that was, we're moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
I can't, or the board can't speak for what McKenna's gonna do, I don't know.
Right.
We all agree on that.
Absolutely.
Correct.
All right. So. The fence, he needs a fence and there's a fence there. So what we really have to do right now is address the, the variance in front of us.
Agreed.
Which is, do we, is one, two, or three gonna work?
Right, and what I was.
That is gonna be up to what McKenna does.
So when I took this oath here, it was to basically use hardship only. Treat each individual home as an each individual home, not go off of what the neighbors did before and what the other neighbors have done in the past.
Correct.
And we need to follow hardship rules. I hate to say this, but neighbors disputing is not a hardship. It's not a hardship because you don't get along with somebody. I've not got along with somebody before and we got along two days later. I'm not trying to say that that situation's the same, but it's not falling under hardship. His American Disabilities Act, if he takes that to court, that's a court, that's a judge's decision and that's gonna be way over my head.
Yeah.
But it sounds like he could, he could win that one, but that's between him and the, you know, civil courts.
So let's, can we, uh.
I don't see any hardship in this.
Okay, so let's talk about the, the yellow part, the, the, the decorative fence. Let's talk about that, cause I don't think that violates any of the.
Correct, you can do that.
Absolutely not.
All your way. So I just wanted to clear that, we're trying to clear things out, right?
Right, yeah.
So now.
Remove things from the equation.
So now, the, the, the pink fence or the privacy seventy two inch. Uh, the only thing that I'm hearing is, is you're not supposed to go parallel to the berm, but this is definitely not what that ordinance was written for.
So.
Looking past the house, from the corner of the house forward. Here to here, okay.
So.
I'm saying, along here, that's.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so here to here.
So that's why, we're not gonna worry about the front anymore, we're moving on.
Let's talk about, we're all good up to the front of the house.
So my opinion is.
And now, proposal one is a thirty six foot variance that he wants.
I see that, I see that.
The least variance is always the best, in my opinion. So the proposal two, which is a twenty four foot variance, would be the lesser of the.
Correct, it would be the.
Lesser of the pain.
Correct.
All right, hold those thoughts, Steve, you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to comment on what Dennis was saying here, that when I was gone, I told you guys, I was in Brazil from two thousand nine till two thousand twelve. When I left, there was no fence, when I came back, there was a fence. That fence was non-conforming. It got put in while I was gone in Brazil and he shortly took it out because we ta- I don't have a dog. When I first moved in, I had two dogs, they were old, they lasted a couple of years, never had a dog since. The dog he's talking about is Al Pruitt's little white dog, cause Al rides his bike around it, accidentally got off the leash one time and ran over. And it's, it's, it's ridic- and that's another reason I need the fence, is if I do have my buddy over and he's got his dog, at least I got that privacy fence there where nobody can even see it, it doesn't bother them. You know, I don't, I understand, I, I threw in the, uh, twenty six, you know, halfway, just to throw, like, proposal two or B or whatever. But I really think that I'd like to go to the front of my garage. And my hardship is, is I expect privacy in my yard too. You know, that's my hardship. I want to be able to go play with my car in the trailer, open up my car trailer door and prepare to go to the racetrack for the weekend without, you know, within privacy. know, within privacy. And, and the, the other thing I do about the, well, I'll leave the decorative fence out of it. But.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's all. That's my hard, my hardship is not only that I don't get along with my neighbors, but I don't know if you drove past, but from the corner of my house to the front of my garage, that's a long distance, you know?
But you bought this house knowing that. Like, you know that Gibraltar isn't building fences out to the road. It's like, you can't just say.
No, I get it. I bought that house knowing that, absolutely. And I never even intended on ever putting a fence. And like I say, I walk out of here today and it doesn't.
You guys aren't buddies by now. I was hoping that we were gonna come back and they were like, hey, we've.
No, 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 man. No, no, that, you know, no. We were buddies for a long time. That ain't.
You should be. Why not? Life's too short to be angry at your neighbor.
I'm not angry. I'm just, I'm not angry. I just, you know, don't have time to do.
I love you. You're my neighbor. You're not, you're like a five-block neighbor, but I still love you.
Yeah, that's cool. No, I, I get along with everybody. And I'm a good neighbor. Um, I, and, and you know, just, there's one. You know, what can I say?
Hey, we can't be perfect. So, I appreciate it though. I do appreciate. And I see you guys are both passionate. And I do appreciate it.
At this time, we'll close public opinion. And so.
Talking about hardship. I, I'm not sure that that's, half the things we do here are somebody mad at somebody about a fence. About half the things we do with fences have to do with people not getting along.
Yeah, but that's not our job, to make people get along. Our job is to approve a variance. And why should we approve a variance for two neighbors that aren't getting along? They won't be here in twenty-five, thirty years. And then the rest of the neighborhood has to live with it. My children have to grow up with it, fences all the way out to the road. And then we're like Royal Oak here with the tat stacked on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we're done.
You know what? Deny it. Deny it.
If that's what you want.
That's what I want.
I mean, if you want us to deny it, I mean, we can.
Okay, just, we'll keep on going.
All right, go ahead. Keep going.
So.
So I just wanna say, I just wanna say, well, okay, when defining the hardship, we've talked about this over the years. We said, you know, like having your mom, somebody gets hurt and you have to deal with somebody, and there's things that are, that, it's, that's a hardship. It's a people thing. So I, I'm gonna argue that it is a people thing. Okay? It's, it's a, I understand what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what this board is for.
I'm, 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 I disagree with that. I believe this board is for variance, for building, building mater, you're building homes, materials, variance for.
We don't have any more open, we almost have no open lots in town.
Right.
So, not to get in the weeds of this, but what we're really talking about is a practical. McKenna, is a prac, the term is a practical.
Practical difficulty, I mean, I think that either way.
The definition, the definition says suffering difficulty, adversity, or often involving, involving physical, emotional, or financial challenges.
That's the same thing.
That's the definition. No, people is not. We change our minds every day. I change my mind. I want peanut butter and jelly for dinner. Now I want bacon.
I think that the, the ordinance is open enough to allow the ZBA to interpret that, you know, this, this big circumstances constitutes a hardship. And that's consistent with the decisions that you've made previously. So I don't think it, it necessitates, you know, a complete change in how you issue those variances. I think that, you're correct that the shorter privacy fence going clo, not as close to the road would be a lesser variance. And I think it would maybe be a good compromise. But ultimately, it's the, you know, that I think that the fact that it's, it, it, it doesn't, I think it, it's up to you whether it constitutes a hardship and you're fully within your rights to say that it doesn't.
Right. So if we can try and come meet in the middle and all, get along, proposal two seems reasonable. It goes to the end of his garage.
I concur.
And gives you a little privacy somewhere in the middle. And then the other twenty-four decorative, we're not talking about, but this current situation in front of us. Try and meet somewhere in the middle. Hope you guys can have a six-foot fence between the garage and your garage, and you don't see each other, whatever you do. Who cares? But.
Nick, that.
This one.
On proposal two, it goes halfway between the garage.
Well, their, their garage, I'm sorry, I forget.
Goes to the front of their garage.
Yeah, in front of their garage.
In front of his garage.
And halfway on his garage.
Again, the, the garage being attached and not attached, there's a difference of houses, but that's a kind of a meet in the middle. I think that's the fairest of the situation, which is an unfortunate situation for everybody that this is, uh, this has got this far down. See, aren't you glad you didn't say deny it and walk out? We're about to help you out. You see what I mean?
Keep your comments. We're done.
Don't want the public. Cause we don't want this to turn into the Griffin issue where there's cops called a hundred times and it goes to the courts and this. We don't, trying to, we're trying to avoid that, wasting tons of people's time and the court system's time. So if we can.
I'll make a motion to go for proposal two.
I'll second that.
Secretary, you wanna read the roll?
Hold on one second, please. So proposal two is a twenty-four foot.
Variance.
Variance, correct?
Twenty-four foot variance for the construction of a seventy-two inch privacy fence.
Okay. Um, Markham?
Yep.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Eager?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Any old business?
You're welcome.
Table or adjourned items?
What do we have to do with this?
Just need a motion to adjourn?
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Good news is.